We approve by Commissioner Francis, second by Commissioner Harrison. Commissioner Francis?
They were fine.
Fine.
Nothing to add?
Any other commissioners? We have a quorum, by the way. Do we have all our full commissioners, right?
We have all the regular members present with Kathy Braun being removed.
Okay. Thank you. Any other further comments? All in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
C seven hands, so it passes unanimously. Next item is 801 Post Road Review of Revised Plan Pursuant to Conditions of Approval of Special Permits. Mr. Went?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I did provide in my staff comments an outline, and I'm happy to go through that. I did receive a call from the town attorney's office yesterday in its, you will recall, this was a special permit application that was approved of conditions, and then this applicant is seeking to address those conditions with the revised plan. But inasmuch as there was an appeal taken on that approval, the town attorney's office is recommending that the revision to the special permit be treated as a revised special permit application in hold of public hearing. So that is their recommendation. I'm happy to go through the revisions to the plan that were made in response to the commission's conditions, but that is the recommendation I received yesterday.
In light of the recommendation, we would get a motion on the table to discuss anything further. I would be entertaining the motion in line with the recommendation. Commissioner Levy?
Would that be to move it to a public hearing on the new application?
That's how I understand it.
Yes.
Move to public hearing.
Second?
Second from Commissioner Braveman. Any discussion?
No.
Okay. Then essentially, to avoid, if we have to go through the revisions, if everybody is agreeable to the recommendation, so we don't have to go through the revisions. Commissioner Braveman, any comment?
No.
No, in light of the town attorney's recommendation, the pending appeal, I think it's wise to follow the recommendation. So I would be in support of the motion. Any other comments? We'll move to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
C seven hands up, so motion passes unanimously. New applications for recommendation to public hearing, 190 Sherman Street, special permit application of the Penzi Real Estate Group LLC for a 24-foot by 7-foot two-story addition to an existing office in the Center Design District.
I don't have much to add to this, Mr. Chairman. This is an existing office on Sherman Street. A new owner wishes to do a modest-sized addition, and because it is an addition, it is a special permit that does require public hearing.
May I have a motion?
Sure.
Commissioner Levy move to public?
Move to public hearing.
Yeah. Second? Commissioner Francis? Anything to add?
No comment.
Move to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
There we go. Commissioner Braun in favor, count seven, passes unanimously. Compliance and coastal site plan, 1370 Fairfield Beach Road Coastal Site Plan, application of 1370 Fairfield Beach Road LLC pertaining to construction of a single-family dwelling in the Beach District.
Okay. This application is for a new compliant FEMA compliant, single-family residence. There isn't existing residence on this property that will be removed. You do have a staff report which recommends approval subject to the following conditions. Number one, that native plantings be installed and maintained in accordance with the coastal planting plan, which has been submitted. Construction be in conformance with our flood protection regulations, which is section 32. Number three, that soil and erosion and sedimentation controls be installed and maintained during the entirety of the construction. And four, that post-construction contours are required on the as-built survey and at the end of the project to ensure that the grades are consistent with existing grades. This matter, and as part of the packet, was referred to the DEEP Coastal Resources Division. That referral resulted in their finding of this project being consistent with applicable coastal management policies, provided proper erosion and sedimentation controls are maintained, and that is one of the recommended conditions. Other than that, that's all I have at this point, Mr. Chairman, unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Went. May I have a motion?
Move to approve?
With staff conditions?
With the four staff conditions.
Thank you.
I think it's four.
Correct.
Move to approve with conditions by Commissioner Levy, second by Commissioner Ford. Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, I mean, it's got the DEEP approval with the staff conditions. It meets our requirements. Move to approve.
Commissioner Ford?
I concur with Commissioner Levy.
And I do as well. No reason to deny that I see. Commissioner Braun? You're on mute, I think.
Is anyone here from the applicant? I had a question about...
No, this isn't...
Oh.
If you've got a question, go ahead and ask. I'll do my best to answer it, but if there's questions I can't answer, then we can...
Okay.
Take the next step, but go ahead.
It's been reviewed by staff, and with those conditions, it satisfies coastal site. I was just curious, if it's an existing building, is it taller or wider? Is there more or less impervious surface than the existing building? And is the height going to be higher than the existing building? And also, I know they have to do native plantings, but are they, is the tree removal required for this project going to be replaced by an equal number of trees or similar plantings, equivalent plantings?
Okay. Well, it's certainly taller than the existing building. The existing building is a one-story structure, I believe. This is a two-story structure that's elevated on piers, which is required now to comply with the FEMA requirements. The lot coverage is increasing from 13.6% to 19.9%, but that's in compliance with the Beach District regulations. So the footprint is somewhat larger. I don't believe there's any tree removal taking place.
It's hard to tell.
The planting plan is, so I think, hopefully, I don't know if there was another part to that question that I didn't answer.
No, that's, no, that's good. No, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? We put this to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Count seven hands, passes unanimously. Moving on to our public hearing. Call 116 Sherman Street, special permit application of TMM Sherman Street LLC pertaining to a new three-story mixed-use building in the Center Design District. Tony Fallon, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is John Fallon. I'm pleased to be here tonight representing the applicant, property owner. The applicants are actually Michael T. Mian and Mian Law LLC. I'll talk about in a minute. Michael Mian is right over there somewhere. The application is for approval of the development of a mixed-use office and residential building at 116 Sherman Street. Property, as you know, is located in the Center Design Business District, and the uses are permitted subject to this review pursuant to section 12.3.4 and 12.3.16 of the regulations. The proposed residential use is compliant with all the provisions of section 12.3.16, with which you are familiar. The attractively designed building, designed by Mr. Phil Serone, who's joining us tonight remotely and will be presenting, is designed to provide the offices for Mian Law on the first floor, as well as two residential dwelling units above. A few words about Mian Law. The firm has been around since 1961. It has very strong roots in the Fairfield community. Indeed, these days, it's comprised of Richard, Michael Mian, Richard J. Mian Jr., and Richard J. Mian, all three of whom reside in Fairfield. The roots of the family run very deep here, and they've serviced many, many Fairfield residents as part of their practice for years. The firm's founder was certainly an important mentor to a lot of us, Richard T. Mian Jr. He was originally a police officer and was the first police officer to become a Superior Court judge. He founded the firm, and the firm has an absolutely stellar reputation for its litigative and other services throughout the state. Indeed, Mike lives here, is certified in numerous areas of trial attorney practice and is highly regarded. So this is a perfect opportunity for the Mian firm and the Mians to move their law practice to Fairfield to a very, very convenient location. The firm itself is a boutique firm. It has 10 total employees, however, only six of those employees work full-time at the office. The other four employees are part-time workers and generally work remotely. The firm is open Monday through Friday, 8:30 PM to 5:00 PM, and as the type of boutique law firm it is, it never represents more than, say, 50 clients at any one time. Client visits are by appointment only and are conducted in person, but as you can imagine, in the world we're living in now, more and more by way of remote client meetings and indeed legal proceedings involving court appearances, depositions, and other virtual trials. The point being that the firm does not, based upon the nature of its practice, generate a high volume of activity at the office itself. The firm has carefully designed the layout here to make sure that the technical capability will be superior so that we can benefit from that type of virtual utilization that'll benefit efficiency and client convenience. As to the two residential units, which Phil will review with you, they provide additional housing inventory for our downtown, and I believe are consistent with past approvals, encouraging mixed-use opportunities in this very neighborhood, and certainly in the Center Design Business District. On April 7, 2022, the Zoning Board of Appeals granted a variance of section 28.6.6 of the regulations in order to reduce the required parking for the proposed mixed-use development from 18 spaces to 13. In accordance with the presentation that was made at that time, the applicant seeks reduction of the required parking for residential use in this mixed-use development in the Center Design Business District, as is allowed pursuant to section 28.6.1. In granting the variance, based upon the evidence that they heard, the board found that the application of section 28.6.1 would be appropriate based upon the factors that I mentioned before just a minute ago, as far as the nature and use of the law firm, that the 13 parking spaces as proposed would be sufficient and more than appropriate to accommodate the proposed uses. And as I said, the board relied on the testimony that I presented here as far as six employees, four working remotely, et cetera. All of these factors ensured, we hope you would agree, as the board found, that the parking that we proposed would be more than adequate to meet the need of the firm, and indeed, as confirmed by the experience of other mixed-use developments in this district, all on-site parking will generally be available to the residents during periods of peak use involving evening hours and weekends. The building, I think, is very beautifully designed by Mr. Serone, so I think at this point in time, I'd like to call on him to give you a brief overview of the architectural design and interior floor plan. Then I'll have some concluding comments. Mr. Serone?
Thank you, John. Can I, am I heard?
Yes, you are.
Okay. So, if you can see the screen, I'm assuming you can, this is the existing site plan. There's an existing two-story building in the front of the site here that's used as office space, and then there's an existing two-car garage towards the back of the property that's currently also offered, used as office space. The proposed project knocked down the existing building and has widened the driveway, so we have two lanes coming, an entrance lane and an exit lane on the driveway, which conforms with the engineering requirements. And then this cross-tatch area here shows what the first floor of the building is, and then the rest of this is the outline of the second and third floors of the building. So the first floor, as you'll see in a second, is much smaller, and then we handle lever over the parking, over part of the parking for the rest of it. We've taken basically and parked across this whole part of the property here. We have a little trash enclosure in the back over there and a couple more spots here. We were able to get a little, very little bit, but a little bit of landscaping along this property line over here, a couple of feet at least, and we did go to code enforcement, and we met with engineering, and we've gotten all of those approvals, and we did tweak the building after we did go to code enforcement. As far as the building itself, oh, that's actually jumping ahead there. So on the, there's a small basement. Basement is really underneath that front part of the building, which is mostly going to be storage, mechanical, and we obviously have the stair and the elevator that go down there. The first floor of the building, which is going to be office space here for Mian Law, has an entrance in the front, a staircase that goes up to the other two floors of the building, but most of the people are going to come in for the law office, at least. They'll come in off of the parking lot area in the back here. There's an elevator and a staircase here, so we have just under 600 square feet of office space on the first floor. When you go to the second floor, that's where we have our two offices. And we understand this is a little unorthodox. A lot of times, the offices, I'm sorry, we have our two apartments. A lot of times, the apartments are on the upper floor. For a variety of reasons, we put the office on the upper floor, and the second floor here has one apartment, a two-bedroom apartment in the front that is accessed off of this staircase, but it's also accessed off of the elevator. So the elevator does serve both of the two apartments, and then this staircase also serves the back apartment. So they both have their own staircase to come up, although it does serve the next floor up. This apartment in the back of the building does have a balcony, an exterior balcony over here. You'll see in a minute, this apartment in the front actually has access to a roof balcony When you get to the third floor, the third floor is completely the office level. So we have a staircase in the front. We have a couple of bathrooms in core space here, staircase, another second staircase in the middle with the elevator here, so this is really the main entrance into the office space. Variety of offices across the side of the building here, as well as over here with conference rooms, and then some more offices in the front here. We do have access to the roof through both of those staircases, as well as the elevator. We'll have some mechanical space here, which of course will be screened. We have some outdoor space, amenity space for the front apartment that's accessed off of this staircase, and then we have outdoor space here that's accessed off of the elevator and this staircase for the law firm. And one of the several reasons, as I said, that we put the law office on the upper floor, one of them is you have some better views from up there. The other one is we prefer to have the law office over the apartment versus the people in the apartment on top of the law office. And then the third one is it does give them much better access to this rooftop terrace if they want to be able to use that for any sort of events or meetings or anything, or just even for their employees to be able to go outside. The outside of the building, and I'll show you some renderings in a second, but the outside of the building is basically on the side that you drive in, so if you're standing on the street facing it, the right-hand side is mostly all glass, with the front porch being solid here. These will be all metal-framed windows. These are, these beams will actually be made of a composite material. They're similar to, if you know, the Equinox in Southport. They've used beams similar to that over there, and we're doing them on a couple of projects also, but they're actually a high-density PVC material that'll look like steel. Some of them might actually be steel, but that's basically what they are. Aluminum-framed windows, composite panels, and then this is that balcony, which will have a glass railing system on it. This is the street elevation of the building, so this is, these doors go into that little vestibule area for the first-floor office and then goes upstairs. This is the stair tower here, which this windows in also, and then these are some of the office spaces here. But to kind of just jump, to put it in context, in the neighborhood for you, this is the building on the corner, which is actually five stories tall. This is obviously our building here, and then this is the existing houses that's next door to it. So this kind of gives you a picture of what it looks like in context of the neighborhood. Just jumping a little bit, this is just a little bit more of a close-up of the building to kind of give you a little bit better perspective. These panels are a high-density wood fiber panel that'll, it'll look like real wood, but it's much more durable than that. It's much more denser than that. Doesn't absorb dirt or anything like that. These will be a similar-type panel on the bottom. Again, that'll be very dense, and then we have a railing system along the top of the building that'll be for the apartment and for the law office balcony areas, rooftop terrace areas, but it'll also screen the mechanical equipment that's up there. So after we take any questions, that's really kind of a quick thumbnail of what the project is. I'll unchair my screen now so that, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Commissioner Levy?
Two questions. Is this where the existing Ricky O. office had been?
Yeah, it's almost directly across the street from where I am.
And then Nordic Fish is back there. Do they have an easement through this driveway, or?
No.
How do they?
I don't believe so. I don't believe, I don't know that they have no...
Yeah, I don't know. I know where Nordic Fish is. I don't know that they have any access from this property to their building.
Mr. Mian informs us that that Nordic Fish is actually one property over to the left.
Can you speak on the microphone? I can't hear him. Stand up, please.
Yeah, sure. I think it's already leaving you that is this property directly behind what was attorney towards Ricky O.'s building. And he answered, no, this building is to the left, attorney Ricky O.'s building was to the right.
I got you, got it. My apologies.
That's where the easement is, I think.
Yes. Right. My apologies. Did you hear that? Okay.
I did, thank you.
Just making sure we picked it up on the mics.
Sorry.
Acoustics are not great here.
I know.
Commissioner Francis?
Do these apartments each have front and back doors? I saw one, but I didn't see the other.
Question, Mrs. Serone, is do the...
Yeah, no, I heard the question, yes. So the front apartment is accessed from both, you can get to it from the staircase, both staircase and the elevator. The back apartment is only accessed off of the one staircase, which is 100% legal. I mean, we've met, as I said, we went to code enforcement, we've spoken to building and fire marshals, and in fact, had a separate meeting just with the fire marshal to go over all of the, any fire code issues that could come up. The building's going to be completely sprinkled, so it'll have a fire sprinkler system in it, and the one for the apartments in particular, the one exit is 100% legal and code conforming.
I didn't know that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Braveman and Commissioner Harrison?
Since it is a little unusual to have the apartment in the middle of the building with the office space on top, is there any particular plans or proposal for directing clients to the law office as opposed to, you know, having them mistakenly go onto the second floor?
So the answer to the question, I'm sorry, John, can I? So the answer is, yeah, so the elevator is going to be set up so that the apartments will have, you know, for lack of better terms, one fob that'll only, will open on the apartment floor, and the office, people will only be able to open on their floor, so we can control it for sure. The rest of it, we will do with signage, so as people come in that back vestibule area, it'll be clear signage that delineates which floor the apartment is on and which floor the offices are on.
I think the elevator key fobs are going to be very helpful.
It's not dissimilar to situations you'll find in certain of the Brick Walk development, where there's residential and they have just key fob access only to the residential floor.
Right, and not dissimilar to the building we did next to, or two doors away from your office, John, on Sherman Street for Michael Fazio and Curran and Fazio. That building, although the apartments are on the third floor, it's a similar situation, and you have to know which floor you go to. So we did the exact same thing in that building, just two floors of commercial, one floor of residential.
Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, thank you. Just looking at the code review, will there be a generator near the building or adjacent to it?
Mrs. Serone, generator?
We don't have any plans for a generator right now. If, and Mr. Mian and myself will have to have more of a conversation about that. If we decide to put a generator in, we'll have, we will be putting it on the roof.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Braun? You're on mute, I think.
I think I said something in code review about needing a landscaping plan and a lighting plan. I don't know if I saw in the material. Obviously, this light is almost totally covered now, but I think there are trees in the front, maybe?
Yeah, so we've actually added landscaping since the code enforcement meeting, and those trees were added as part of that. And we also did, the regulations allow us to have part of your parking spaces as a car overhang, so we did add a little green space for a couple of feet along the side of the property, but the property is mostly covered, so we do have, we do have some trees along the street. And I'm sorry, your other comment was, oh, the lighting. So the lighting is, yeah. We're not going to have any pole lights. Any of the lighting, of course, all our lighting's night sky compliant. Our lighting will be in the building itself shining down, so it'll be 100% controlled.
And the different, so right now, the usage is simply a law firm on the first and second floor, and now in the future, it will be, what's on the top, the third floor will be the law firm, the second floor will be the apartments, and what's on the ground floor? Is it raised?
Yeah. So currently, the building is not a law firm at all. I'm not, it's used as a commercial space, but it's not Mr. Mian's law firm in there currently. It's a different use. Our new building will be on the first-floor office space, the second-floor, two apartments, the third-floor office space.
Okay, so it could be another lawyer. I worry a little bit about, I know they gave a variance for parking. How many people do you anticipate living there or using the ground floor? I mean, you've explained the law firm. I don't know what will be on the ground floor in terms of the office use.
The space is quite small. What's the first-floor office area?
It's just under 600 square feet.
So I think it's fair to assume that if it, actually, it could be my office someday. That's another story. But I think at 600 square feet, I think you're talking about maybe one other employee, you know, would be in there. It's not a large office area downstairs.
Do you anticipate everyone being able to park on-site that will be using the site, or probably some will be parking on the road also? I don't mean guests.
Oh, no. I, I'm very, we're comfortable, as was the ZBA. I mean, as I said, we have six full-time employees who work approximately 8:30 to 5:00. The other four employees are generally remote workers. We have very, very, very little client foot traffic because of the nature of our practice and also the nature of law practice generally these days, where so much in terms of deposition work and things of that nature, and meetings themselves have evolved into virtual participation. So we're very comfortable that the 13 spaces will meet the needs of the law firm and the residents. And as I said before, after 5 o'clock, you know, on Monday through Friday and all weekends, the entire site will be basically available. And I think the experience generally in the Center Design District, and certainly in that neighborhood where I've been for 20 years, is this particular area of Sherman Street has a plethora of mixed use in it, on it, and there's very little stress by way of on-street parking because there's, it works well, because, especially if the nature of the office business is as this is, where it's going to be 8:30 to 4:30 or 5:30.
So that, yeah, I love, I love the idea of mixed use. As far as WPCA, have they given a permit for this yet? Or do they need...
Have they, Mr. Zumo, our engineer, Mr. Zumo's here. Is that in process?
Yes.
It is in process at this point.
Is there any anticipated pushback on the permit for the WPCA?
No, we, as I said, as Mrs. Serone indicated, we've met extensively, even beyond the code meeting, with the engineering department, the fire department, and Mr. Zumo, who's here, who's our engineer, has had meetings with the WPCA. They don't anticipate any problem because obviously there was an office use here before, and although we are adding two residences, that doesn't create any capacity issues based upon the flows that are anticipated from this development and the capacities of the sewer system.
And it seems, from what I gather, it seems like the impervious surface is not any greater in the future than it is now? You're mostly going up instead of sideways?
Yeah, I think that's a fair, I mean, I can't give you the exact calculation, but as I said, in their review, engineering didn't feel that there was, they felt that the drainage design as executed by Mr. Zumo is meeting all town requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
Right now, you, is it the plan to have the Meehan Law Firm involved at first and third floor? Or is the first floor expected to be rented out?
I, I think that's, I think that's fluid.
Fluid, okay. I have to chuckle every time you said a few times now litigation counsel works nine to five weekday.
Which would be so lucky.
I thought only zoning people worked on weekends.
Yeah. I've commented here a few times now. Any other questions from at least Mrs. Serone at this point?
Commissioner Francis. The tenants have assigned parking spaces?
We don't anticipate doing that. But we haven't found that, we, we, the, the, the Fazio building that Mr., um, uh, Serone referred to, which is two buildings down across the street, we have the residential units there and we haven't found it necessary. And you approve that. We haven't found it necessary to, you know, segregate parking. I mean, we don't anticipate that to be a problem. Because we think we'll have more than adequate parking on site.
Any other questions for Mrs. Serone? Thank you.
Yeah, I really don't have a great deal more. The, the firm, it's an attractive building. Um, I think I and other people in the neighborhood are, are finding it going to have a very positive impact. That's a, it's a wonderful street. It has, as I said, a plethora of successful mixed use on it. Uh, the firm itself, uh, has a rich tradition of providing high-level of legal services, uh, to its clients. It's Fairfield-based, um, based upon the location of its residences. And we think it fits in very, very well with the whole downtown center approach, where we've always, as Commissioner Braun referenced and you have always supported, mixed use as a concept. So, I think it's consistent with the goals, uh, of the, the Center Design Business District and the historic character of the surrounding neighborhood. And I think it'll be a very, very positive addition to Sherman Street and the, the Center Design District. And it'll be great to have the Meehan Law Firm as a neighbor, uh, downtown, which will be very convenient for them based upon proximity of downtown, the train station and I-95. So, we hope you'll favorably consider the application as the zoning board of appeals did and do appreciate your time and attention.
Any final questions from the commission? That's it. Close, at least, the initial presentation. Uh, for the members that then go on to the public hearing?
Yes.
Are there any members of the public that wish to be heard on this? Anybody in, on the remote, who's accessing remote, that wishes to speak on this application?
There's no one signed up in the chat, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Once, twice, twice.
Thank you.
At that, I'll close the, uh, the hearing on this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Fallon.
So, any need to kick it over?
I don't think, I wouldn't kick it over.
Why don't we just move to the vote?
Well, we don't know, well, it wasn't requested. We don't know what to do. I'll hold off. Call 1073 North Benson Road, special exception application of Fairfield University pertaining to construction of a new student dormitory in the A-zone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, and members of, members of the commission. Again, for the record, uh, my name is John Fallon. I'm pleased to be here tonight representing Fairfield University, my alma mater. Uh, with regard to this application, uh, the application is for special exception and site plan approval in conjunction with our plans to construct a 165-bed new student residence hall in the residential quadrangle on the campus. Uh, as I point out in the statement of use, the, the last, uh, an, an active master plan that we have described, uh, a $225 million program with regard to enhancement of facilities and the student experience through upgrades, renovations, et cetera, to our facilities. This commission has played a large role in that. We deeply appreciate it. Whether it's been the Egan School of Nursing, the Dolan School of Business, and many other renovations, including the now under construction Convocation Center, uh, we continue to attempt to raise the bar in terms of the overall quality of the student experience and, uh, enhancing that experience. Uh, we also come to you, not boastfully, but hopefully, you'll agree, the university is a very vital asset to the community. We not only provide a very high level of education, but we do employ over 1,300 people. I also talked in my, um, statement about the challenges that a school, a, a New England smaller school like Fairfield University faces based upon declining demographics of college-bound students and affordability issues. This is something that we have and continue to address to make sure that the school remains strong and vital. Uh, what that means for us is that we have a, a planned program of controlled growth to increase over time the undergraduate enrollment to approximately 5,000 students. Uh, that would be approximately, based upon current enrollment trends, 1,200 students per, uh, per class. Uh, this modest growth that we foresee ensures that we're going to remain uniquely vibrant and successful during these times that are challenging. To do that, obviously, we have to address additional beds on the campus. We, we plan to address that through a series of internal structural upgrades, which you may, if you've been on the campus, see now, uh, as we are in the summer months. Uh, and this application is a part of that as well. Uh, because the new dormitory will provide an additional 165 beds. And it is being built in, in the primary area of the existing students' residence quadrangle. Uh, we did make an application to the zoning board of appeals for a variance of section 5.2.2 in order to allow the construction at the time of, of a dormitory with five stories and 56 feet. Uh, after numerous and very productive meetings with neighbors, the university determined to amend that application and reduce the proposed height to 46 feet and the number of stories to four. Uh, Mr. David Frasanelly, our, our vice president of facilities, is here. He led the, the dialogue with the neighbors in order to reach that agreement. And on April 7th, 2022, uh, the zoning board of appeals approved the application for a 46-foot height, four-story building. And I'll expand on that and the rationale for that in, in a few minutes. As part of the dialogue that we had with the neighbors, there were other undertakings which were agreed to. Uh, those, and you'll hear from Mr. Frasanelly tonight. We have a short PowerPoint to present to you on that. But those generally included, uh, number one, the replacement of existing exterior light poles, which currently have a height of 16 to 18 feet with reduced wattage, uh, exterior lighting at 12 feet. It was also agreed that trees will be planted every 50 feet, uh, on Round Hill Road. And the university agreed, most importantly, and you will hear, to construct an eight-foot berm planted with 16-foot abreviades to further mitigate any possible impact to the dormitory. All of these commitments, as referenced by the university with the neighbors and made part of the zoning board of appeals, uh, were also made conditions of the zoning board of appeals. And the copy of the ZBA notice of decision was submitted with my material and is your record. So, all of these undertakings, which Mr. Frasanelly will review momentarily, have been made conditions of the ZBA approval. And in the spirit and letter of our understanding with the neighbors, should you see fit, as we hope you will, to grant this application, we would ask and suggest that you make these same conditions as reflected in the ZBA decision, conditions of your approval as well. I think before I talk about some of the background in terms of the campus development as it relates to height and the like, I want to just give you an overview with regard to the proposal itself, obviously. And I'll do that by calling on two individuals. First, Mr. Jose Fernandez from Newman Architects will give you a brief overview of the architectural design of the building itself. And then I am going to ask the aforementioned Mr. Frasanelly to come up and give you the overview of our plans in terms of the construction of the berm, the improvements to lighting, and the other factors that we have agreed with, uh, to implement with the neighbors and that are part of the, uh, ZBA approval. Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, John. Uh, for the record, my name is Jose Hernandez. I'm a principal with Newman Architects. I'm the, uh, principal in charge of Regis West, which is the residential hall that we're going to, uh, present this evening. If, I guess it's Emmeline, is it?
Emmeline is here, yeah.
Okay. Um, could we go to the first slide, Emmeline? I think it's, uh, CS00. That, thank you. So, um, the university, uh, has a precinct, uh, that, that Attorney Fallon referred to, which is a freshman quad. And within that quad is where, uh, it's appropriate to cite freshman and sophomore residential halls. So, in red is the location of Regis West. And it's located on Round Hill Road on the west edge of the campus. Next slide, please. Thank you. Uh, when we were citing, uh, the building, there were a number of constraints that really locked us into where the building is now. Jokes, which is to the north, was existing. Uh, Regis to the east and a number of utilities were located to the east. And there was a regulated setback to the south, which is why we had to do that cock in the wing on the south. Next slide, please. Thank you. The residential hall, Regis West, uh, is actually a very unremarkable, uh, building. And it's intentionally unremarkable because we were trying to get it to sit very comfortably within the quad. It's, uh, four stories on top of a basement. It yields 165 beds. Each plate is about 9,300 square feet for a total of about 46,184 square feet. Uh, it's a classic, uh, residential hall plan, which is that it has a central core for communicating, uh, through, through a, a central stair and elevators. And within that core is where you find most of the common uses. So, lounges, um, um, study spaces, that sort. You have two wings on any, each wing is where the, um, residential rooms are. And at the end of each wing is where the egress stairs are. Uh, the building is fully accessible and has, and meets all the criteria for, uh, code egress. Um, there's a couple of things to note here. If, now, if, if you just sound that, thank you, Emmeline. So, there's a couple of things to note here is when we were citing the building and we were constrained by, uh, Jokes and Regis and, and, and the setback, we were very mindful of its relationship to those buildings. So, what we did was we pushed it to the east as far as we could. And so, in terms of a setback, we're about six feet further back than the facade of Jokes. And we're about 26 feet further back than the, uh, west facade of the Wellness Center. Next slide, please. Thank you. When we were designing the building, as Attorney Fallon had indicated, we were very mindful of how we wanted this building to, to be cited, how we wanted it to relate to its, um, its neighbors in, in the freshman quad precinct. And, um, during design, we, we were, we were very cognizant of what that facade would look like from Round Hill. So, at the direction of the university, as Attorney Fallon indicated, we had removed an entire floor. What's, I think what's worth noting is that if you think about the height, the actual physical height, and, and, and this is something that I applaud, uh, Mr. Frasanelly for, is not calculated height. But if you're just looking at the building and you're looking at the surrounding building to, what do you actually see? Like, that, that, that was the question to us. So, what you're actually going to see is that Regis West is 10 feet lower than 42 Langue to the south. It's six feet lower than, uh, Regis to the east. And it's marginally but lower than Jokes to the north. When we did remove that floor, by the way, that, that was 38 beds that the university, um, opted to take off the count so that we could scale the building down. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, here's a rendering of Regis West. And as I indicated, there, there really is not a whole lot that's remarkable about the building. We intentionally tried to understate the massing. The, the details are fairly simple. It's a brick building that is in the same family of the brick of, of the surrounding buildings. We're going to pattern the brick, but, but there's nothing, um, that stands out. Uh, it is a high-performing envelope, which means that part of, uh, the charge from the university was that the issue of sustainability was very important. So, we were charged with coming up with a design, uh, and components and elements that could, uh, yield a high-performing, um, low-energy-used building.
What is, just one review, that we see the corner of...
That would be the corner of Regis. That's the southwest corner of Regis. And, and so, Regis, uh, West, I, it, it will literally complete the smaller quad that would be, uh, Regis West to the west and Regis to the east. So, it actually sits in there quite, quite nicely. The goal was to try and keep the facade quiet. And I'm not trying to just talk architectural speak, but what we meant there was, and again, this was the charge from the university, was because this building was on the, on the edge of the western campus along Round Hill Road, we were intentionally trying to keep the facade and the design fairly simple and the massing fairly simple. In a nutshell, that's the architecture of the building.
Thank you, Jose.
Yep.
Questions for, questions in the commission? Commissioner Harrison?
Thank you. Um, so what, I guess, what, what age are your, I guess, what year, was it like a freshman dorm?
It's a sophomore dorm.
Okay. So, will they have cars? Is there parking?
They will not, no.
How is that enforced? Is that through the university?
Yeah, they're not allowed, uh, to have, have vehicles on campus.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have, um, any renderings or, uh, images that will show them what it might look like from Round Hill Road?
Um, I don't have any queued up, but I think that in the P and Z... And, and that's going to be part of Mr. Frasanelly's presentation. Any other questions for Mr. Hernandez?
Yeah, a thought for Mr. Frasanelly, if the idea for sophomore dorms, if we have an expectation or thought that this may pull other people off-campus on, if adding this dorm will help. I'm not sure if it's Mr. Frasanelly or somebody else's thought or later.
Oh, we, we can address that, yes. Just to give a little more context to, to what Jose was saying before, I did point out in my, um, statement of use, uh, that the historic development of, of the campus, a lot of it occurred under the earlier regulations that were amended in 1989. And prior to 89, under section 27.5, uh, a, a special exception structure such as a dormitory in a residential zone could be 60 feet or five stories. And as a result of that, and this is just to put in context, as I think Jose probably did a better job than I may be doing, but we did point out that in the quad area, Jokes Hall presently, as we would measure height under the regulations, is 58.8 feet, as is Regis Hall, 58.8 feet. Gonzaga is 54.38 feet. Loyola is 59.04 feet. And Campion is 53.67 feet. So, it, you know, that also puts some context to what I think the point that Jose was making that, you know, at 46 feet, based upon our agreement with the neighbors, we, we don't feel this is going to be, uh, intrusive, relative to the, the current quadrangle design. So, I think what I'd like to do at this point in time is, is call on Mr. Frasanelly... So, I think what I'd like to do at this point in time is, is call on Mr. Frasenelli, you know, obviously, the university in its own self-interest, but also in its interest of trying to be a good neighbor, has always made it a priority to try to work through issues and, and considerations and concerns. And that ultimately benefits the neighborhood, and it ultimately benefits us. And that was certainly something that, under Mr. Frasenelli's leadership, we did hear. And that's what led to the modification of the proposal and the conditions that he's going to review with you that were to directly address points and considerations that the neighbors had. So, Mr. Frasenelli?
Thank you, Attorney Fallon. My name, for the record, is David Frasenelli. I'm vice president for facilities at Fairfield University. A point of clarification, the difference between a sophomore dorm, a freshman dorm and a sophomore dorm, freshmen and sophomores are required to have meal plans. So, we do not provide any, well, cooking facilities in the rooms on the, on an apartment basis. We do have kitchen for lounges, for popcorn night, and that kind of good stuff. When you graduate or move up to be a junior or senior, you get, you know, more of an apartment-style kitchen facilities. The same would apply with, for parking. Freshmen and sophomores are not permitted to have cars on campus. So if we could, please bring up my first slide.
Is that one starting with the PowerPoint presentation that just says Regis West?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan.
Okay. Next slide, please. So, um, I would like to think that this is the process that, that works best. We initially met, we had envisioned a longer rectangular building. We got feedback from staff at conservation that they would prefer us to be further out of conservation areas to the south. So we, we pushed the building as far north as we could, and we also kinked the building, which describes its shape. As we shortened the building to maintain our bed count, which we had envisioned around 200, we had a floor on the top. As we looked at that, met with neighbors, and had discussions, you know, we realized that that building would in fact be taller than Jokes. And in the spirit of working with people and neighbors, and the fact that it is visible from the edge of the property, we cut, we cut a floor off. So, um, this is why this slide explains what was proposed and what is proposed, that we made a reduction in height, as John noted, from 56 to 46, reducing the square footage and reducing the bed count. And so, that's the summation on the bottom. So the top floor has been removed. Next slide, please. We also realized, based on the feedback, that, you know, this will be visible in, in a significant way from Round Hill Road, and what other steps we could do to mitigate the impact on that. And that's where we came up with the concept of an eight-foot-high berm with 16-foot-tall arborvitae planted on top. That essentially hides the building and hides, quite frankly, Regis. And I have some slides that'll show you that for the best, for the most part of the year, there are some trees that are currently existing along Round Hill Road, but they're not evergreen. They don't stay up all year. So for large portions of the year, you see directly into the campus, including Regis Hall, which faces that direction, albeit a little further back. We, we felt that the berm would hide any headlights in that parking lot, and that we would have the significant improvement of the streetscape with the, that's a lot easier to read for me, with, with the trees suggested by the tree warden. You know, in general, we see this building as an improvement over what's there now, an improvement in terms of what you see visually, but also an improvement on general light trespass and night sky illumination. Next slide, please. So, again, this is the aerial view. For those of you watching virtually, it's the building virtually at the center of the slide, and you can see what I described as the kink. If north is to the left side of the screen, south is to the right side, you can go due west and see its proximity to Round Hill Road and neighbors. I'm going to provide you some street views next. Next slide, please. So, this is an existing street view, and I believe it is from across the street and one building up from the corner of Round Hill Drive. It is in the yard of Attorney Greg Hayes. And what you're seeing, a little bit to the left of center, is Jokes Hall. And you can see to the right of that, existing Regis Hall. And I know it's, it's hard to see, but there are sightlines showing the orientation of this image. Next slide, please.
What time of year was this taken, just to be clear?
It was early spring.
Early spring, okay.
Early spring.
March 28th.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Great. So, this is that same view. We have dropped the building in, the rendering of the building, and we have shown an eight-foot-high berm and the 16-foot-high arborvitae. And as you can see, it essentially blocks out that view from that perspective. Next slide, please. And that's, oh, by the way, I should add, this is a view from the second-floor window of that house. We engaged with the neighbors and got permission to fly drones in their yard, and accordingly, that's, that's what we believe the view from the second-floor window will be. Next slide, please. And that's showing after growth. You know, after a couple of years, there will be substantial growth in that arborvitae. Next slide, please. So again, current view, snow on the ground. You're seeing on the left side of the screen, Jokes Hall, and to the middle, just to the right, is existing Regis Hall with the white panels under the windows. There's a page-wire fence. The existing trees pretty much disappear this time of year so that you can see right into the site. And the trees, as you can see, are, there's quite a few dead trees, and there's some scraggly trees and so forth. Next slide, please. Here it is with the berm. And you'll see a little man standing on the hill. That's our architect, Jose Hernandez, dropped in as a rendering. But again, you can see the impact of these arborvitae and the berm. Next slide, please. And after some growth, even more. You know, we do appreciate that there will be some maintenance of watering to get these to grow, these arborvitae. But again, it, it effectively screens out the campus. Next slide, please. So this is a line-of-sight visual. On the bottom half, I believe that's the second story or that house depicted is the Murphy's house. It shows the relation sightline from the Eve up to the new dorm and Regis behind it, which is essentially blocked from any views from that perspective. And again, this is down Round Hill Drive. If you look at the slide in the upper-left corner, I believe that's Mrs. Murphy's home. And again, you can see pretty lively into campus. Next slide, please. So, this is the view directly across, which I believe is standing in Round Hill Drive, looking into the building. Again, you can see many of the trees are dead. Next slide, please. With the berm, with, with the arborvitae. Next slide, please. And after some further growth. Now, I will tell you, these slides were really aimed to show you the arborvitae and the berm. They do not show the requirement of the town tree warden to add other trees at the sidewalk every 50 feet. So, they are shown in our plan. They're, they're a, a condition of approval, but not necessarily illustrated here. The, the point of these slides was to really drive home the point that the building will be hidden from view. Next, next slide, please.
The trees will be between the arborvitae and the streets.
And the streets.
Yeah.
Correct.
Commissioner Braun had her hand up. I'll get you. Commissioner Braun? You have a question, Mr. Braun, Commissioner Braun?
Yes, um...
You're on mute.
Yeah, do you have, are you going to show us a slide that shows where the trees are now that are going to be removed? Like, a horizontal app for the set? Like, what is where the guy is standing now? What trees are there now? Because I've seen...
I don't have a plan.
Photos from one of the neighbors on Round Hill Drive. It looks pretty lush, I have to say, and they're very close to the road. Isn't there any way those trees could be preserved and build the berm behind it?
We, we considered that, and in order to get the sloping of the berm and the safe sloping of the berm so it doesn't erode with, with erosion, those trees would be removed.
But when you plant...
We, we could not construct the berm behind those existing trees.
When you put new trees in, would they be the same type that are there now? Or would they be something else that can grow on a berm, I guess? I don't know about the science of that.
Yeah, that, that, that's under the jurisdiction of the tree warden. And, you know, the tree warden did note that there are a number of trees that the EPA recommends be removed because they foster, and this is again out of my daily wick, certain insects that are undesirable. So, whatever the tree warden specifies is what we'll plan.
Was there a tree inventory done of what's there now? I think that was...
No.
That on the code?
No.
Okay.
Commissioner Francis?
Now, what's the degree angle of the berm? About 45? Looks pretty steep.
We have with us Brian Phillips from Langin Engineering, who has done the design.
Yes, the slope of the berm will be two-on-one, so two feet horizontal for every one foot vertical.
I'm sorry, can you have him speak into the microphone? You can't hear him.
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan. Did you just come up and then just reintroduce yourself?
Yes, Brian Phillips with Langin Engineering. The berm will be sloped at two-to-one slope, so for every two-foot horizontal, one-foot vertical, from the road to a high point where the trees will be planted, and then back down at the same slope.
How much is that going to be? 20 feet, 30 feet, 40 feet?
Horizontally.
Yeah, from, from the sidewalk.
So the berm itself is approximately eight feet high, so that's about 16 plus or minus to the top, and then back down.
So, steep, okay.
Your record, not to trip, but your record does include also an email from Laura Pooley to Mr. Phillips that was dated April 28, 2022, having reviewed the berm design. She did approve it. That email is also incorporated in the code-review minutes of May 31st. They literally took it and, as part of the engineering comments, put them in. So this, this berm has been reviewed by the, the engineering department in terms of all aspects of construction, drainage, et cetera.
Yes, we had multiple meetings with Laura prior to her retirement, and as well with Mega Jane.
And will there be ground planting?
Yes. The, the berm will be planted with a metal mix type of seed, you know, to keep the soil together, preventing erosion, as well as some ground cover plantings, per comment from Laura. As David mentioned, there will be street trees as well, as directed by the tree warden.
And that will be, oh, the tree belt past the sidewalk?
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ford?
Um, I don't know who this is for, but how many feet, like, so, I'm just, just for reference, looking at an overview of property. How many, where, how many feet of trees are you taking out? So, if you're starting north on, you know, coming down Round Hill Road, where does it start and where would it end?
We're, we're going to bring Brian back.
If I may, I just wanted to, Emmeline, in the master link, there's a planned view of the berm and a cross-section view.
Yes. It's CG 102.
It's coming right in there.
Yeah, right here. So this is the, the berm plan itself. We go back up. Yep, that one. CG 102. So you can see the planned view, Regis West to the, to the east, and then Round Hill. And then here is the proposed grading of the berm, showing the arborvitae at the top of the berm, the street trees as indicated from the tree warden, and then the ground cover plantings as well. And then in the upper-right corner of this plan, you can see a section that we cut A to A' through the berm, if we just go to the top right of this plan. This section, you'll see Round Hill on the left, street trees. We come up at the two-to-one slope. Top of the berm includes the evergreen plantings, and then we come back down to the parking lot for Regis West.
It's because the parking lot's got to be reconfigured, right? Is that...
The parking lot will stay essentially as it is, yes.
Seems a little more squared off, squared off, but, okay. And then I just, one final question. And then, so south of where the berm would end, none of those trees are being removed. Those will just remain?
Correct. South of the berm is heavily wooded.
Yeah, no, okay, all right. So I, I think I got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think if, if I may add as a point of reference, if you hold that image, you can see in that parking lot, there's a road that passes through it, and then turns west to go up the hill. As a point of reference, if you're looking at it, right about where that road turns is, is fairly close to where the berm ends.
That road goes up the hill a little bit?
Yeah. And there's some existing evergreen plantings that were planted as part of the Jokes, I mean, the, the Langit Hall approval process, just to the right of that. That will be incorporated into this, so that it's a seamless transition.
Will the berm have grass between the street and the tops?
Yes. There you are.
Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, Commissioner Lee, sorry.
If my math is correct, the slope of the berm will be about 22 and 1/2 degrees?
Um, yes, the...
The two run and one rise, or...
Two run, one rise. I'm sorry, I don't know the degrees. I used to work in percentages.
Okay. So it'd be a lot less than a 45-degree slope.
Correct. 45 degrees would be one to one.
One to one, yeah. Is there any chance of sort of having almost a garden-type effect here, as well as the ground covering? I mean, something like lilies, for instance, might be very nice in the spring?
Yes.
You know, because we are concerned about the neighbors and the adjacent property owners.
Yeah, Laura, Laura's comments, she did ask for a blue-rub juniper or some, some other type of coniferous ground cover shrub, be interspersed with the metal mix that we proposed, and we have met that kind of...
I think it's also worth noting that the existing condition there, Round Hill Road is below the site, and it generally slopes the entire width of that area between the parking lot and Round Hill Road, down to Round Hill Road?
Correct.
So that, and effectively by putting... So that, and effectively by putting an eight-foot-high berm, you're cutting that distance in half. There is less surface running from that piece of property. Certainly, everything in the parking lot is caught in a catch basin. But, you know, the runoff from that is about half of what currently exists, um, from that patch of land into the Round Hill Road.
Yes, from a drainage perspective, we have included this design in our analysis. It was reviewed by Laura, um, before her retirement and then as well the current town engineer reviewed as well. As David said, you know, currently, from the, the site parking lot, grade drain, um, drains directly down to Round Hill Road, so we're, as David mentioned, you know, cutting that in half and directing more water onto our site.
Yeah, so the exact, the parking lot water will stay on campus.
Correct.
And just from the berm down will go.
Correct. Do you have other slides, David?
We have, we have some further slides?
Commissioner, let Commissioner Braun go. Does anyone else need to have questions? Commissioner Braun?
Um, somewhere in the code review it said conservation get a, a permit. Is that a wetlands permit? And where are the wetlands on, on your site here? I think this is Mill River Road.
Yeah, for the record, uh, your file should include, we did receive an inland wetlands permit on April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. It's Wetlands Permit WP twenty-two one hundred. So, they, we did, this was fully reviewed by the inland wetlands agency, and they did grant an inland wetlands permit.
Could someone?
And there's no activity, there's no activity within the wetlands, obviously. I think the regulated areas are delineated on the, on the plan.
I can answer a question. So, the, the location of the wetlands, and actually, the wetlands in question are, they're really just a, a stormwater basin that was constructed, um, when the parking lot was constructed, when these roads were put in. Um, so it accepts stormwater from the parking lot to the south. Um, the wetlands are page right of Regis West, so you kind of see sort of a horseshoe-type area, um, you know, with the dash line. That is the location of the stormwater basin or wetland.
Regis West is the new building, your building, right?
Correct, Regis West is.
The red building, okay.
Shown on this page in the.
So, that's a detention swale or something? That's the wetland that we're talking about?
Correct, it is a detention basin.
Um, and I, I did have a thought about, I, I would really like to see the planting plan, because when I look at the trees that are along the stretch that the neighbor, Mr. Kramer, supplied to us in a, in a letter, you probably have a copy of that. Honestly, it looks pretty lush and natural and wild, and arborvitae's are like very Disney-esque. It, it just doesn't look, it doesn't look the same at all. Is there, if you're gonna have that as a backdrop, that might be okay if you had something in front of it of a variety of trees and shrubs and plantings that would hide the effect of the arborvitae's, which is not natural-looking at all. But I would really like to see a planting plan, um, and also.
I'll be.
Yeah, this is what.
Yeah, we, we have submitted, yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll be addressing Mr. Kramer's letter appropriately, at, at the appropriate time. But I would say that we have submitted a planting plan. It's a planting plan that was arrived at after numerous, numerous, numerous onsite, offsite, Zoom meetings, et cetera, with the neighbors. And without delving too far early into, the meetings that Mr. Kramer attended, I'll get into that later. Uh, and, but the bottom line here is, we, we feel respectfully that this is an excellent planting plan. We think that these slides that Mr. Frasenelli has reviewed so far, when you look at existing conditions and what we're going to have afterwards, I think it's a major improvement, not only in terms of mitigating any impact relative to Regis West, but just mitigating current views and vistas associated with Jokes and Regis. But that's your decision.
No, no, I.
But it, it's a decision that we made after a lot of consultation and a lot of good-faith discussions with the neighbors.
Um, how, the, the berm, okay, so the berm is, what, twenty-two degrees or so? How, how far away from the sidewalk does it start inclining at that level? Is it like right at the sidewalk or a little bit back? Like, is it gonna look like a wall when you walk on the sidewalk?
The, the berm starts about five feet behind the sidewalk. Um, so at the bottom of the berm, again, a comment from Laura, um, was to provide, you know, a small swale at the bottom of the berm to collect stormwater before it, uh, she flew over the sidewalk. So, we have included a, a small flat area, and then we begin to increase slope up to the berm.
And how wa- how like, um, from the top of the berm to the bottom of the berm, then how many feet is that horizontally? I'm sure it says it on this.
Horizontally, um, so from Round Hill Road to the top of the berm is approximately twenty to twenty-five feet.
And the sidewalk is three, three or four feet wide, then you have five feet, so it's around ten feet, the width of the berm?
I believe the sidewalk is five feet, right?
Oh, so it's about, so if it's twenty feet from the, oh, from the sidewalk, not from the road, from the sidewalk. So, you have the sidewalk, which is five feet of flat earth, then you have the berm from the bottom to the top. I'm trying to envision what it will look like when you're walking down the road or driving from Round Hill Drive right there. So, you have a sidewalk that's five feet, then you have flat earth for five feet, then you have a berm that goes up, what, ten feet or fifteen feet? Or horizontally goes, goes horizontally in?
Horizontally, twenty feet.
The berm itself from bottom to top?
And maybe the, the section view might better illustrate.
Yeah, that one.
So, Round Hill is on the left, you, you know, you have the sidewalk and then the flat area where the trees, the street trees are planted, and then we begin to climb.
Okay. What's that horizontal distance from the bottom of the berm to the top of the berm?
Approximately twenty feet.
Okay. So, then you have a five-foot flat stretch, and then you have a five-foot sidewalk. Then you have the road.
Correct.
So, the trees that are there now are obviously where the berm would be? They're not on the flat part, the trees that are there now?
The trees that are there now are approximately along the property line, uh, which is more or less at the top of the berm.
Oh, so they're not that close to the road? They're, they're really where the arborvitae's would be if you go horizontally as the crow flies?
Correct, yeah, I mean, it's not a, a uniform, but approximately, you know, the trees are centered along the property line.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Harris?
Thank you. Can you elaborate, what will the berm be, be made out of? Like, what kind of fill or soil will it be?
Um, the, the berm will be soils, uh, which has been excavated for the construction of Regis West.
Okay.
Uh, so, just a, a general fill.
Okay, thank you. Do you think it'll have any effect on the natural environment of that area?
Um, no.
Okay, well, there are no wetlands in that area, so.
Correct, no.
It's actually, if I, I'm not an engineer, but based on our conversations with Ms. Pooley, it'll actually improve, uh, the drainage containment, you know, runoff, uh, that may occur now in the winter time. Not from the parking area where it's contained, but just generally, there'll be, there'll be better drainage in place as, as a result of construction of the berm. Which is something she wanted to ensure.
More slides, Mr. President?
Well, I, um, this is a different presentation than my presentation, so I, I mean, if there are.
I'll get back to you.
Okay, I just didn't know if there were more questions about the air view of that berm, or should I go back?
I'll, I'll hold my questions for your presentation.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. So, this is, oh, okay. And this is, I think, after some years of growth. Next slide, please. So, as part of my engaging with the neighbors, um, the Murphys live on the north corner of Round Hill Drive and Round Hill Road. Um, and Mrs. Murphy sent me a picture from her second-floor, uh, bedroom window, and I know it's hard to see on this kind of image, but, uh, again, at that time of year, this is, this is what she sees. This is what she looks into. And to put it in perspective, and I know it's tough, on the left side of that photograph is Jokes Hall. As noted earlier, the new proposed dorm, which is south of that or to the right of that dorm, is essentially the same height, maybe slightly lower. So, if you drew a line across, you would get a sense of where that building is supposed to sit. What you're seeing, um, is there's a series of parking lots, um. Next slide, please. A series of existing poles, and unfortunately, uh, when I did the PowerPoint, it got a little scrambled, but the first pole is an octagon-shaped pole that's sixteen feet tall and two-hundred-and... I'm sorry.
Behind you better?
Yeah. Okay, it's two-hundred-and-fifty watts. The two-hundred-and-fifty's next to Sternberg's supposed to be underneath the optic, octagonal. But they're octagon, seventies octagonal-shaped fixtures where light comes out of all sides of it at two-hundred-and-fifty watts. And as noted, that pole is sixteen feet tall. Next to that is a high-pressure sodium light, a basic floodlight, on an eighteen-foot-tall pole, um, that's four-hundred watts. What we are proposing is to replace these with the campus standard Sternberg poles, which are fifty-one watts.
And twelve feet.
And twelve.
Twelve feet tall.
So, you're going from four-hundred and two-hundred-and-fifty watts to fifty-one watts. You're also dropping it down four feet to six feet. Um, and that, of course, is on the inside of the berm.
It's saving a lot of energy.
It's saving a lot of energy. We, we actually have done it on, uh, Loyola Boulevard, and we saved, we cut our power on that about seventy-five percent. So, it saves energy, um, the Sternberg fixtures are night-sky friendly, so they generally direct the light down. It's a, it's a, it's not that, um, I'll call it caustic-acidic, bright-yellow light. It's, it's a whiter light and a little bit easier visually. And, um, next slide, please. So, we are proposing to change all those light fixtures, and we have included in our submission a photometric study showing the impact of that, uh, which is essentially zero light trespass off the property. I'm showing a picture here of existing Regis Hall, and again, a little difficult to see, but in that center section, you're looking up into the building and seeing the light fixtures. Uh, and if you were to look over into the bedrooms, you'll see each of the bedroom fixtures are large, round fixtures. And again, you look up into the building, you see that. The building we're proposing, uh, we are aiming to achieve a LEED silver standard, and given its proximity near the neighbors, uh, we have come up with a design such that any of the light fixtures in this building will be on the inside face of the western wall, meaning you won't be able to look in the building and see a light fixture. What you will see is indirect reflected light. Um, again, an important LEED consideration, but very much intended and designed, uh, for the benefit of the neighbors, particularly, you know, at the top floors, where you're more likely to see them from off-campus. Next slide, please. Newman Architects have also, um, looked at the areas with the bigger windows, such as the study lounges, and will have muted darker colors on those walls, so it's not light reflecting off a white wall. It's, uh, generally a muted color. And that's what I'm making reference to here, the light observing panels and pretty much all lighting. It's also worth noting that, again, I mentioned Regis Hall has those white panels under the windows. Uh, this facade in general will be much more muted, um, and brick, and certainly a lot less visible. Next slide, please. Is that it? Okay. So, in conclusion, the berm will limit the views of the proposed building both day, but more significantly at night. It'll block the headlights. It'll hopefully discourage students or kids' foot traffic in and out of the site. Um, and we see this as a significant improvement to the streetscape. I know opinions may differ, but, you know, think about it, a, a berm with arborvitae completely blocking the campus with that berm planted with grasses, with other plantings as recommended by Laura Pooley, um, I think it's gonna be a much more attractive view. The camp, the parking lot lighting will reduce the pole height, reduce the wattage, dramatically reduce what I'll call the Wizard of Oz effect of the glowing campus, uh, reducing night-sky elimination. It is, it is a, you know, we in general, um, are phasing in. We were actually one of the first campuses to introduce LED lighting outside. Um, we, we plan to continue that across the campus for, for a lot of reasons, but also saving electricity and saving costs. Um, and again, the Regis building itself designed reducing room and lounge light trespass and not, and the facade will not be illuminated. We won't have spots shining up on the facade.
Thank you, David.
Any other questions on?
Questions from the commission?
LED silver status and all that good stuff?
Commissioner Braun?
Do we got a copy of the, of whatever the planting pla- or landscaping plan is that you've been talking about, and also of wherever the wetlands permit is? Um, I have one other question about, um, bird-safe windows. I don't know much about it, but I've been reading a little bit. There is a way of designing windows and buildings so they're more safe for birds and prevent bird strikes. I don't know if you know anything about that, but it'd be nice to consider that.
We would definitely consider that. I don't know much about it, but I will.
Mr. Hernandez does, don't he?
Ask Mr. Hernandez to look into that.
Okay, thanks.
And the, the plantings are shown both on the berm plan, CG, CG one oh two, which shows all the plantings associated with the berm. And then there is also a, a landscaping plan, um, associated with the Regis West site, LP one oh one.
And I, I can submit, Commissioner, the, uh, the wetlands permit to the record. Uh, I, I'll, I'll email that to, uh.
Thank you for the, that's a permit, but I didn't see this plantings plan. At least it wasn't in color, anyway. It's in some of the material, I could just look for it here? Okay.
It is.
Okay.
Commissioner Bravon?
Uh, thank you, just a couple of questions. So, as, uh, as part of your improved lighting, um, plan and your, uh, LEED, uh, your attempt to get the LEED silver certification, does the, uh, the lighting that you're proposing meet the International Dark Sky Standards?
Could you talk into the microphone?
Yeah, sorry, you gotta come up.
Oh, that, you can, you gotta, you gotta talk into the microphone, so the record picks it up.
Want to grab another chair from over there?
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Um, the answer is, it, the black and white answer is no, because the fixture, uh, does not do one-hundred percent cutoff. There, there is some uplight within the globe, and because it's not one-hundred percent, it does not meet that level of, uh, of, uh, performance.
The light is, uh, when you say up, up, uplight, it's going vertically?
Within the fixture itself, though.
Okay.
So, what you'd see is a very faint rim of light, but it's not emanating out.
And that's the only respect in which it doesn't meet the International Dark Sky Standard for, uh, for dark-skies, um, communities?
That's my understanding from our lighting designer, who we had look at a number of fixtures. The, 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 the issue that we were trying to deal with was to work within the campus standard, and that became an obstacle because it's a campus standard. So, but it was close enough where we felt that it was addressing the issues in terms of what we were trying to achieve, which is Mr. Frasenelli said, which was, uh, reduce the halo effect, which this will do. It'll do it in height of the pole, it'll do it in the, uh, uh, the profile of the fixture head itself, and because it's only fifty-one watts, and a LED.
I'd like to elaborate. The, the Sternberg classifies that light fixture as night-sky friendly. It's not a hundred percent cutoff. If you look at the fixture, the entire cap is metal, so there is not light directed straightly up, but there is a globe. You'll know when, with a true a hundred percent cutoff fixture, there is no globe. It's, it's open. Um, so, this is a dramatic improvement, but it's not a hundred percent cutoff fixture.
Okay, thank you. Um, and as part of the, um, as part of the parking regulations that we have, um, there's certain shade trees that are required. shade trees that are required if you're doing parking lots. Does that apply to your project in which you are actually, I don't know, that you're creating additional parking? Do those regulations apply?
We're not creating any additional parking.
We're not. So we, we're not, there's no parking lot trees provided for here because we're not creating any additional parking here at this location, although we are creating additional parking on campus. And there, the tree provisions were complied with.
Okay. And, and you happen to add, happened to add a couple of shade trees in your planting plan, just a particular point? But you're not, you're not required to under the parking lot?
Under that section, though.
Got it. And where are you in getting WPCA approval?
We, we engaged the consultant to test the flows, but we have not appeared in front of the WPCA as of yet.
Good. Thank you very much.
And I believe that the flows we did monitor, you know, and, you know, you have to do it in several locations along the pathway, were favorable.
Can I, can I just ask, Mr. Wendt?
Oh, sorry. No, no, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Can I just ask, Mr. Wendt, is there a section of our regulations that requires dark sky, international dark sky standard compliance here? And is that applicable or not?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioner?
Couple.
Commissioner Francis.
Back to the dorm construction. How many beds do you currently have on campus?
Um, I, I'm not 100% sure. I believe it's in the 3,000 range.
Oh, a lot, okay. Are you planning any additional dorms or is this the last one?
Not at this time. We did, you may recall, we have approval and we're under construction of two new townhouse blocks, which are 84 beds. As part of that presentation, we touched on the, you know, where we see things going in terms of other future dorms. I think it really came out of, you know, we have approval and completed renovations to Dolan Hall, which added 22 beds. And at that hearing, it was suggested, let us know where you're going overall. So as part of the townhouses, we did put our cards on the table as best we knew at that time. We have other buildings on campus. For example, the former Dolan School of Business, which was built as a conference center, had 64 bedrooms as part of that. They were turned into the nicest faculty offices in the world because each of those faculty offices was a bedroom with a private bathroom. If we were to contemplate turning that back into a dorm, the 64 bedrooms to 128 beds, we would need to file an application and come before you requesting that as a change of use. We are considering renovations to Faber Hall that could add 16 beds within the envelope of the building. But again, now that, I'm not sure we'd need planning and zoning for interior renovations of a lounge into beds, but, you know, I would say that at some point, we'll be coming to you with those.
Is any parking being removed in this project?
Yes. I believe the number is about 37 spots. If you're familiar with the site, west of Regis Hall, there's a circle. That circle will be underneath the building. We should note that, again, sophomores don't have cars, so that parking lot doesn't serve sophomores now. It actually serves juniors and seniors elsewhere on campus who park their cars, much to their chagrin, inconveniently over there. The north townhouse application for 84 beds carried with that 40 parking spaces. But the 84 beds are being filled by 79 beds being removed from the existing townhouses. The bedrooms, the four, four-bed units are going to be, four-bed units are currently five-bed units. They'll be reduced back down to four. So in the 84 beds, 79 of those will be existing. So we're looking at net five new beds in the north townhouses, for which we're providing 40 spaces. 40 parking spaces. So it essentially offsets.
Yeah, okay.
And I will also say that we are looking internal to the campus for other opportunities to add parking. It may be four spots here, four spots there. Again, we would go through the entire approval process with conservation, planning and zoning.
We did submit a letter to the record, which you should have, from VHB, April 27, 2022. It was addressed to Mr. Wendt. And it goes through that analysis of that we're basically adding 40 spaces up in that, that new development that you approved. So we have a net of 35 extra to offset the 37 that will be taken up with the new construction.
Which they will need as they move to juniors and seniors.
Did you figure out how many beds you have currently on campus yet?
I did not. We give you that information, though.
Okay, thank you. Do you have plans for a parking garage? Not specifically yet.
Not specifically, no.
Thank you.
What's the, this past academic year, what was the undergrad student population? A round number?
I should have that number, but I don't.
4,200, was it?
About 4,200.
That's fine. Round numbers are fine. What is your undergrad population going to be this coming academic year?
Again, I can submit that information. I'd much prefer to give you accurate numbers.
You can certainly submit that through staff, just with admissions.
I had asked earlier, I'd forgotten, do we have expectation that with these new dorms, for sophomores, we'll be possibly reconfiguring things and pulling upperclassmen off or back onto campus?
Well, certainly, you know, the 84 townhouses, you know, I think I talked about the two classifications of housing, freshmen, sophomore, that have meal plans, junior, seniors that do not have meal plans, and we provide kitchens and living rooms. That would be more typical of the 84. But as I mentioned, we're de-densifying the townhouses. So this project specifically aimed at sophomores, probably not.
Okay.
But the barnyard, A, B, and C, those 200 beds down there are really more of an alternative.
Do you, if you don't have the answer to this, or if you have a master plan to submit, that'd be great. Have an expectation in the next three to five years what the undergrad population would be or could be or being aimed, would it be aimed?
You know, I believe the university, and I think John touched on this, New England universities, and where's your area of vulnerability? We have a target of 5,000 undergraduates and some growth at the graduate level. The graduate being of a similar model, non-residential, largely online. But I think the number is 5,000.
Okay. We do expect to have some kind of growth on campus for, you have freshman and sophomore on-campus housing?
Yes.
And it's juniors and seniors that are going off-campus?
Only seniors.
Only seniors, okay. And about?
And the Fairfield model is that when you come to Fairfield University, you commit to four years of housing. You then have to petition the university for permission not to live off-campus. I mean, not to live on campus.
There you go, yeah.
So now that does not apply to commuter students, but a commuter student needs to demonstrate a certain proximity to campus.
Commuter, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. President Ollie?
Thank you. I will turn it back to.
And we will, I will get the, the information through, to have for your work session on what our projected enrollment is for this fall. And I'll also answer Commissioner Francis's question about the number of beds that we have on campus. Before I summarize, I, I just feel, let me just briefly, I know you received a couple of letters in the last day or two, and I just want to briefly address those. I know you received a letter from Mr. Kramer. It appears he may be in the meeting tonight. I just, again, wanted to point out, without in any way integrating his opinion, and it certainly is right to express it, that we had numerous meetings, Zoom calls, at sites, on and off-campus. Records indicate that on March 31, there was a Zoom call, I believe Mr. Kramer attended. The whole concept that has been proposed to you here in terms of the berm and, and the arborvitae and the plantings was discussed and agreed to. That was then sent, a letter was sent after that meeting to all the neighbors outlining the agreement conditions. We then, at the neighbors' request, submitted the agreement to the Zoning Board of Appeals as part of our presentation. And at the request of the neighbors, asked the Zoning Board of Appeals to incorporate that as conditions of approval. There was no objection taken relative at the ZBA meeting to that, nor was any appeal taken from the ZBA decision, which was published on April 15 in the Fairfield Citizen. At the end of the day, with all due respect, everybody's entitled to their opinion, but I think we at the university very, very, very strongly believe, and we think the majority of the neighbors strongly believe, that the berm that's been described to you, the planting plan that's been described to you, that's going to have a positive impact in terms of the streetscape and will provide very effective mitigation of any perceived impact on the new dorm. So that's all I could say about that. You also received a letter from Mr. Jacobs. I just want to briefly touch upon those points. He references harmonizing with the residential character. Well, this is a permitted use, as you know. These university uses are permitted in this residential zone, subject to the special permit review that is going on right now. We've reviewed in detail tonight the height of the other quad dorms, the history of how they came to be built. It would seem to me that that belies any concern about harmonizing with the residential character, especially when you consider the undertakings that the university is asking you to make conditions of approval in terms of the berms, the lighting, and other factors that were reviewed tonight. Mr. Jacobs cites Section 28.6.2 about parking. Obviously, we've covered parking tonight. The matter of parking requirements in the zone for leasing of rooms in a dwelling do not apply here. He makes concerns, he has concerns about surface water and stormwater. You have in your record the email from Laura Pooley after a complete review of our drainage plan, including the berm. Her comments were incorporated into the code review minutes. Your town engineer, Megha Jane, has also reviewed this as part of this submission, and she has approved it. And you also have an inland wetlands permit, IWP 22100. So I don't think there's any position here in the record that would indicate there's anything that is not appropriate with regard to our stormwater and storm management. So, you know, in summary, I think this is a good example of what every applicant needs to do, but certainly what an applicant having a special exception use in a residential zone needs to do. And that is work with neighbors to ensure that what the needs of the university are are not contrary to the needs and interests of the neighborhood. We've always endeavored to do that, and I think this particular application demonstrates our continued commitment to that. We firmly believe, as I said, that the revised proposal, including the commitments we've made with regard to the berm and landscaping and lighting, ensure that this will not have any adverse impact on the neighborhood, will harmonize in an attractive manner with the character of our campuses that currently exist, and it's going to provide us the additional housing consistent with our very carefully planned growth, which we did review with you when we did the townhouse approval that's now under construction, to allow us to have moderate, modest growth to ensure our stability and long-term viability, which is important to us as an institution, and I would submit important to the town based upon the strong relationship between the town and this university. So we'd be pleased to answer any other questions you might have or members of the public might have, and other than an opportunity to address anything that is discussed in the, in the public comment. I thank you very much.
Commissioner Lee.
Attorney Fallon, is a condition of the ZBA approval that you build the berm?
So if. Yeah, we got to realize, yes, it's a very good point.
So if we were to approve this, but with a condition that you not build the berm, you'd be caught for twitting.
I'd have to go back to the ZBA and.
You'd have conflicting and irreconcilable, man.
Because this, you have this in your, your record, but this is the notice of decision, the notice of filing, and one of the conditions of approval of the height variance is an eight-foot berm and 16-foot arborvitae will be planted. And then it goes on, just so I mentioned, removal of 200, 400 dash 16, 18-foot light poles to be replaced with 51-watt 12-foot poles. Trees will be planted every 50 feet on Round Hill roadside of the berm. Lights in dorm rooms will be placed on the inside face of the wall. Those are the four conditions of approval of the ZBA.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the commission? Just briefly, Attorney Fallon, to the neighbors, when you reached out to them, were they essentially the neighbors on Round Hill Road or they extend beyond Round Hill Road?
They were essentially the neighbors on Round Hill Road, to the best of my knowledge.
Well, we did have, I'm sorry.
Again, for the record, David Frasnelly. We did have a meeting onsite with the neighbors on Carroll Road, College Park.
Okay. Thank you. No other questions for the commission? We can move on to public comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does any member of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Yes, sir. Have them come up with.
They just need to swap places.
Just give them one second, let them vacate, and you can take your spot. Do you have a copy for the applicant?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll get the file. I'll get the file copy. All right. I have other comments for other board members that are here. Okay, thank you.
Was this submitted online, just so I can direct?
It was not.
No, that's fine. Just tell our board members remote, who are joining us remotely, that they're going to have to bear with us.
Good evening. I want to thank the TPZ Board for allowing me to speak to you today. Don't panic, I'm not going to read the whole document I am giving to you now, but I hope you'll take the time to read it now or later, as it fleshes out many of my talking points. My name is Robert Rogers. I live with my family at 20 College Park Drive and have lived there for 27 years. By way of orientation, my house is the first house on the right. As you turn the corner onto College Park Drive from Round Hill Road, my backyard adjoins Fairfield University campus. I am opposed to the new Regis West dorm for the following reasons. Light pollution from the new dorm onto College Park. Given the cantilevered design of the building, the height of which exceeds the single-story Student Health Center added to Jokes Hall, and the net addition of three new light stanchions in the parking lot in front of the proposed new dormitory, there will surely be an increase of light pollution onto College Park Drive. Secondly, lack of any parking or traffic studies showing how the university plans to accommodate the increase in student enrollment, both residential and day students, and the impact on the town of Fairfield traffic congestion with the enrollment planning to grow to 5,000 full-time undergraduates. While the university has made a good faith effort to mitigate the light pollution from the proposed new dorm onto Round Hill Road neighbors through the proposed berm, the reality is that the berm may mute but not eliminate the light pollution from the new dorm. There are significant added new lights from each of the dorm rooms due to student lighting and lamps. Because of the cantilevered nature of the design, comply with the town of Fairfield's wetlands regulations, close to a third of the building's top three floors will be visible to College Park residents closest to Round Hill Road. Also, the plan presentation does not indicate any security cameras or lighting atop the proposed dorm, as the security lightings from Jokes are visible to College Park and any proposed security lighting at no dorm, I think should have been included, or at least indicated that there weren't going to be any. least indicated that there weren't going to be any. The university is also proposing to replace the existing sidewalk entrance and parking lot lighting. The new fixtures, even with the latest version of the wattage and lumens, may reduce the upward light pollution but will certainly increase the halo effect at eye and ground level. I am sensitive to this indirect light issue because of our experience with the Student Health Center adjoining Jokes Park, Jokes Hall, where the university lights the lobby of the health center all night, and sometimes the cleaning crew forgets to turn out the lights in the office, so they are there all night. And no, I'm not looking to have a fence or a 25-foot berm in my backyard. However, some strategic plantings by the Jokes side of the gate to the abandoned road and along up the hill to the parking lot, the Jokes parking lot, in consultation with the College Park residents, may help reduce the significant increase in pollution. Next is the parking and traffic situation. One of the remains concerns that we expressed to the university was the loss of approximately 37 existing parking spaces. While the university has added 43 parking spaces up by the new townhouses, if you consider the reconfiguration of the old townhouses, reduced bed count by 30, and this is where I disagree with the university's recent presentation. In their application of October last year, they talked about the fact that the old townhouses currently had 570 beds, were being reduced to 540, not the reduction to 79 beds. Thus, the adding of the 84 beds from the new townhouses, the net need is for 50 new spaces, and the university has added only 43 at this site. And therefore, that letter that's included in there where they talk about it being net five positive, I would disagree with based upon the university's application in October last year. When asked about this need for additional parking on campus considering the loss of spaces, Dave Frazanelli indicated the university was undertaking a parking and traffic study. When I then raised the issue of parking in February TPZ meeting, the zoning appeals specifically with reference to a bond issue issued by the university to finance the design and construction of the new dorm, as well as a 400-car parking garage and other construction projects, Mr. Fallon indicated that as the dorm was for sophomores, there would be no increase in cars, and further, when the university was ready to propose something, they would contact the neighbors of the town. But let's look at some facts. Part of my presentation, which you'll see, is a fact sheet from the university's 2001-2002 factbook. Look at the chart labeled undergraduate students, campus resident report. And now it had added additional 600 students either living or traveling back and forth to the campus. Historically, approximately 10% will be commuters in their freshman and sophomore years. And 300 will be juniors and seniors within more than two years. Where will they park? Of the current seniors, 77% live off-campus, most of whom, I would argue, make multiple trips on campus during the day and evening for classes, sporting, and other events. Now add an additional 115 students, seniors, living off-campus, making multiple trips through town on a given day when the university reaches 5,000 full-time undergraduate enrollments. At faculty, nonfaculty, which also has to increase because of the new students, workers associated with the university's renovation and construction projects, and there is not enough parking on campus to accommodate all of these increases, and a 400-car parking garage included in the bond issue confirms the university's acknowledgement that this is an issue. Each year, the residents of College Park continue to have to deal with the university's student parking on our street, even with the university's policy of no parking in the neighborhood. This will only increase with the increased enrollment and student frustration about available parking. Per Mr. Fallon's presentation last October, the university has been unwilling to share with the whole neighborhood surrounding the university what their solution is and where the new parking garage might be located. This shouldn't have to wait until 5,000 full-time undergraduate students are all on campus. No one of our neighbors wants to wake up and find they're planning to build a 400-car garage within sight of our houses, and the neighborhood and the town suddenly must deal with the ramifications. Besides the parking issue on campus, what is the traffic impact to the town of Fairfield, and why is there no traffic study to accompany this request? Fairfield roads, especially the Post Road, Round Hill, North Bent, and Barlow Roads are already crowded, especially during the morning and evening commuting hours and when Tomlinson and Ledlow Middle School and High School are in session. Just because it's a sophomore dorm doesn't mean there's no increase in traffic to and from the university. Where was the traffic study for the traffic increase generated by 50 net new beds for juniors and seniors from the townhouses, as well as the additional commuters due to traffic, which is already part of Fairfield? If historical student preferences continue, the beach area will be projected to house approximately 796-year students. Resulting congested impact on Fairfield Beach and transit roads to and from the university from this growth in students, plus faculty and support staff, will certainly negatively impact the livability of other Fairfield residents by requiring additional services as wear on town roads, additional police, fire, and town services. A traffic impact study should be required. Based upon these two objections, I propose that the approval of the new Regis West Dorm be denied. Finally, let's get back to the days when the university would hold an annual get-together with the total surrounding neighbors to review their updates of their quote "10-year plan" and not present these individual projects to individual neighbors as if they don't have a cumulative impact on the university and the community. One final thing on the berm itself. There is an existing berm which backs onto the north part of College Park, which the university installed back when they re-fielded up there. And so, based upon the lack of maintenance of that berm, I would encourage, the berm is supposedly the answer, that the university be held fully responsible for maintenance of that, because the maintenance right at the moment, the upper berm is nonexistent unless the neighbors complain. Also, one of the issues that, in terms of the construction of the berm, will be plowing the sidewalk has been university's responsibility, I guess, and I give the guys a lot of credit, but it's hard to know where the sidewalk begins and where it ends. And so I would anticipate that you will have some damage to the berm after each winter when the plows go by. And so that should also be, you know, looked at as a potential problem for the berm. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Ms. O'Leary? Yeah. Now, you mentioned that as far as planting, that would be north of Jokes Hall, that you're interested in having some planting done?
Well, if you look at the site map, effectively, as you come in the entrance of the Round Hill Road, as if you're going to Jokes Hall, and then there's the abandoned road that heads off to the left.
That's where the theater used to be, or?
No, no, that's all the way down on the Pepsi, that's by the Pepsi Center. This is where, that was the old entrance, actually, to the old Dolan when the novitiate was there.
Okay, further south.
Yeah, much further south. And so, as you come in and you take the right to Jokes Hall from that entrance that's nearest College Park, there's an abandoned road, which the university and the College Park Association basically had an agreement for, I don't know, 35-plus years, predates my arrival, with regards to essentially leaving that as an abandoned road. Because of various storms and things like this over the last, I don't know, five years or so, numerous trees have been lost, both in front of that area as well as up on the hill. And, you know, just quite frankly, with the new health center, and now with the anticipation of, you know, whether this dorm gets built or not, that's going to just, you know, have glow. That's all the best way you can say it. And so that, you know, if the only way we're going to get anywhere is essentially either one, the dorm doesn't get built, or two, you know, we can work with the university on something to block the light.
And how extensive sort of plantings or what would be the scope that you have?
I have no idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does any other member of the public wish to be heard? In person, is there any member of the public that wishes to be heard? Do we have anybody signed up in chat?
There are a couple of phone callers. If any of those folks want to unmute themselves, there's Mr. Kramer seems to turn the camera, but
Ah, yes.
Mr. Kramer, you wish to be heard?
Yes, please.
Okay. If you can just say your name and your address and go right ahead.
Sure, Jeff Kramer, 69 Round Hill Drive. And thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and for reading the letter I sent in this morning. It's been interesting listening to the presentation. It's gotten a little slippery at times. If you will, I'm actually, if I can, I'm actually at the site of where the berm would be, and the comment that the trees are on the property of the university, I'm looking at the trees right now, that really come right up to the sidewalk. And I'm not sure exactly what is town property and what's not, and sorry, it's getting a little dark, but as you can see down the sidewalk, these trees all line up really close onto the sidewalk. So I just wish to dispute the fact, or the comment earlier, that these are set way back into the university area, and they are not. I guess I would also note that there's an existing wall as well that would need to be taken out as part of this project. You know, there was a comment about the runoff of water. I've lived here 10 years, I'm an avid runner. There has never been an issue with water runoff here. I'm not sure how this is going to help that solution, building a giant eight-foot berm. There's already a four-foot incline with the wall and with the hill that is here at the sidewalk. So I define that as just ingenuous as well. And I would think if the berm is built, that the existing landscape, treescape, and the shrubbery that's here would actually be supportive of preventing erosion. There were a couple of comments by John about the community outreach, which I think was later clarified, that really the only outreach was to two of the neighbors here on Round Hill Road that would be most significantly impacted. That, there were a bunch of meetings, as I understand, that were held with them. The rest of the community was not really made available to those discussions until very late in the process. As you mentioned, the March 31st meeting, which I did attend, that was the first time I'd heard of the berm or that it was presented. The ZBA meeting was shortly after that presentation, so there wasn't much time in between the hour meeting and the ZBA meeting, at which time myself and several other neighbors did protest against the berm. Or, I guess more importantly, the removal of the treescape here, which, as you can see in the pictures I sent over, is quite green, as noted earlier. So unfortunately, we were, most of us were not part of that process. There is actually an existing berm here as well, just up the street, that is, no trees were required to be removed to build that berm, which was being used to, I believe, to shade the light as well, and it's one of the properties on Round Hill Road. Yes, speaking of the light, I certainly appreciate the efforts being made by the university to reduce the amount of lighting coming from the area. It sounds like it's also a very economic investment to do as well, as far as reduced energy bills. And I guess I would dispute the fact that removing open space with a new building is to everybody's benefit as well. Sorry, just let me, I want to make sure I get all my points here. Yeah, I think that was largely it. I think, as you guys can see, it's beautiful here on the street, there's an iconic road in Fairfield, and removing the number of trees along here, I just don't really see the need or the purpose. It's not necessary. At a time, I would think we're trying to save trees here in Fairfield and kind of not urbanize the entire department. I think the comment earlier about more of a Disneyland look was quite appropriate. So I'm happy to answer any questions from there.
I have a question. Can you do a 360 with your phones so we can explain what we're looking at, like looking out from where you are?
I'm trying to
Like, maybe you have to take it off selfie or something? Or maybe show it behind you? Like, what's the house behind you? Is that the Murphy House?
That's the Murphy House.
So that's on the north side of Round Hill Drive, when you're
And this is the, right, and this is the other house. I can turn it around from here.
Okay.
And, you know, those are
All those B's are the ones we're talking about? About 100 yards, you think?
Right.
Could you just keep going slowly so we could?
Yep, sorry. And it's, sorry, it's getting dark. So that's
Don't get hit by a car.
Yeah, that's the view.
You're looking out from Round Hill Drive to the right on Round Hill Road, and then to the left on Round Hill Road, right?
Correct, this is to the right of Round Hill Drive. So if you go out of Round Hill Drive, turn right.
Okay.
And then if we go the other way, that's down the street that way, which, you know, these trees are large, I mean, they've been here for a long time. And if, obviously, if there's invasive species, let's get rid of those. If there's dead trees, let's get rid of those, there's no need for that. As you can see, there's plenty of live, healthy trees here.
The picture he showed seemed to have mostly dead trees, but was that just maybe taken during the fall or something, or?
Yeah, unfortunately, that was taken during the dead of winter, when they all look dead. And there are, you know, there are the occasional dead tree, but clearly not the majority.
If they did this plan and put trees like this, and then in, I don't know, 20 years they grew, would that solve the problem from your perspective?
Well, they're spaced out every 50 feet, it's clearly not going to be as dense as this, that's pretty far apart, and it's going to obviously take years to do.
Thanks.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you.
Any other member of the public wishes to be heard that's joining us remotely? If you are calling in, I believe it is star six to unmute yourself? Yes, star six. So I asked earlier, no other member of the public in person wishes to be heard? Final call for a member of the public who's joining us remotely. If you're calling in, star six to unmute yourself. Going once, twice. That'll end the public comment portion of the hearing. Back to Attorney Fallon for rebuttal.
I've never done a rebuttal sitting down, maybe it's better I do that, see what happens. I dispute respectfully Mr. Kramer's assertions, and I leave it to you. You are all very diligent, you're going to go out there. I either walk, jog, or drive by the area we're talking about four times a day, and I submit to you that what is being suggested here as somehow Sherwood Forest is basically mostly dead, scrawny, or invasive-type species that during at least a substantial portion of the year, as the photographs submitted by Mr. Frazanelli indicate, do not provide any visual buffer or any aesthetic attractiveness whatsoever. And so I think if, and if there are some mature trees that don't fall into the category of invasive or dead, the trade-off here, as the vast majority of the neighbors and the most impacted neighbors, Mr. Kramer makes the point, well, they reached out to the impacted neighbors. Well, okay, yeah, I think we did. But these are the people who are not here tonight to voice any objection. These are the people who support the program that's in front of you and who ask the ZBA to approve it with those conditions. So before we first of all get carried away with saying that we're going to denude a forest here to create a berm, that's simply not the case. And to the extent that there may be some healthy specimens of trees that have to be removed and replaced by the berm, that ultimately is a net positive for the community as the community perceives it, because you've seen the before and after shots. And it doesn't change the fact whether those photographs were taken in the winter or the summer, because six months of the year, at least in this region of New England, the trees don't blossom, and so what you see is what Mr. Frazanelli showed you. So I've said all I can about that, I respect Mr. Kramer and his right to speak to it, but I just don't agree. I think that the solution that the impacted neighbors and the university found here is the proper one, it's the proper balancing of the considerations of the university's need for stable growth and for the neighbors needing to be protected so that their property and their enjoyment of their property is not infringed on. Mr. Rogers, I have a lot of respect for Mr. Rogers. But every time I speak, Mr. Rogers speaks at one of these events, I respectfully have to think of the airport theory. When someone buys a house next to an airport and then complains about the airplane traffic. And in this particular case, we have complaints about the airplane traffic while the person is using the airport. This is an email exchange between Mr. Rogers and Jennifer Anderson, who is our, the title is on here, our vice president. We always try to address the questions, comments, or concerns that any of our neighbors, including Mr. Rogers, may have. This is an email that he sent to Jennifer, raising a series of questions that came to his mind while he was walking on the campus and that she responded to in an email on June 3rd. And we haven't heard anything from Mr. Rogers since then, except for tonight. I don't understand, if it's a dialogue that we're trying to create, how we have fallen short of dialoguing every step of the way over 25 years with Mr. Rogers. But suffice it to say, his comments tonight are not well-founded based upon the record. To claim that one of the problems that you should consider in denying this application is light pollution runs against everything you've heard here tonight and the university's commitment relative to improving the light situation, not only in terms of the proposal that's before you tonight, but also generally in terms of existing conditions it reaches. To claim that there's a concern about this proposal that's before you tonight about impact on off-site traffic when it's a freshman and sophomore dorm where cars are not allowed, also is not an issue. To claim that you should deny this application that's before you tonight because of a parking problem when the evidence of record shows that we are creating a net increase of 37 parking spaces on-site for a dormitory where the children, the kids can't have cars, is not, to me, an issue. To deny this application because we have considered and talked about the possibility in the future of constructing a parking garage makes no sense because like anything else we might ever determine to do, if we determined to do it, that would have to come back to you for a full review to ensure that the location, design, and other aspects of any structure, be it a parking garage or whatever, would not have any adverse impact on the neighbors. And to claim that we have fallen afoul of our normal process over three decades of neighborhood outreach, it seems to me is also not true because not only do we have regular meetings, not only have we never become before this commission with a formal application, before we've reached out to the neighbors, but as you can see from what I submitted, when we have questions, we quickly answer them and invite a dialogue. So, and also to talk about the lack of maintenance to the berm, I know how hard the university works to maintain that berm that has probably been there for 30 years between College Park and the campus. And I commend you to go with it.
Where is that berm? I just...
Behind, you know where the...
Is it in there?
Well, it's down there. No, you know where the abandoned road is? That used to be there? And right where the Fieldaki, it's not Fieldaki, it's, is it a Fieldaki? No, behind, but the other Field.
Back.
It's the Fieldaki Field.
Got it. Thank you.
So, look, I, we want to main... Yeah, I mean, look. We think this is a good application. We think it's good for the university. We think it's good because it shows the university's commitment, which we assure Mr. Rogers and all the neighbors, we will maintain that nothing will be done on this campus. And nothing will be brought to you before we have fully vetted it with our neighbors. May we always be in agreement? No. Will that result in a dialogue like this did? Yes, I hope. And will that result in a conclusion and an outcome like this? Hopefully, as you'll see fit to approve it? Yes. Because in this case, we took a very concerned neighborhood and we dealt with it in a manner that was constructive by modifying the proposal and making commitments that led the neighbors to conclude, as we did, that it's a good proposal going forward and one that fairly balances our property rights and our need to keep this university strong, vibrant, and successful. And the neighbors' rights to assume that they can enjoy their homes in peace. And that's what we're always committed to here. And that's what this application is indicative of, what we're trying to do. So, pleased to answer questions, but I hope you'll favorably consider this application.
Any final questions from the commission? The call's up.
Thank you.
That's the last app, I'll close the hearing on this application and close the hearing, excuse me, close the meeting as that's the last application. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.